The Alman, the Alman's Hotel. And she has the introduction that she would like to make for this, um, this night.
Good evening. I'm pleased to introduce another member of our finance department, Reagan Henry. She's accepted the role as a part-time accounting assistant. She was born and raised here in Franklin and she graduated from Southwestern Community College with an associate's in arts. Please welcome me, or please join me in welcoming you.
Thank you, Reagan. We won't ask you to give a speech tonight, maybe later. We have a widespread need across the state for people to work in local government finance, both in municipalities and counties. So if you know someone who's interested in pursuing a career in finances and local government, please have them get in touch with, well, you can get in touch with me and I can put you in touch with the right people, but the League of Municipalities Outreach Coordinator and I'll work as the outreach coordinator for the Association of County Commissioners. And if you have someone you think might be interested in a career in finance for local government, let us know and we'll connect them with the people who can make that happen. So we need to think about the future because some of us are getting a little old. Okay, the next introduction, we'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Dill, the Public Works Director for Franklin. Mr. Dill.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. I'm pleased to announce that our new part-time streets group member is Mr. Kevin Cade, who is here with us tonight. So Kevin graduated high school in 2022. He's really excited about being a part of our team and we're pleased to have him. He's already doing a great job for us and I'm pleased to announce that Kevin Cade is our part-time street premium. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Now, I'd like to introduce our Chief of Police, Mr. Devin Holland, for introduction of some officers and a promotion, I believe.
Good afternoon, Erk. Good evening, Mayor and Council. These two young ladies were actually sworn in on August 28th of this year by Mayor Horton. This is the only opportunity they've had to be introduced to the council. This is Officer Peyton Arnold and this is Officer Taylor Carlton. Taylor is a resident of Franklin. Her longtime boyfriend, her current fiance now, I'm sure she is. And her stepdad are making candidate, so she's familiar with the law enforcement. And she just graduated BLET in June. Officer Arnold, she's a graduate of Western Carolina University last year and she's from Gastonia area, just fell in love with the area, going to college, Delaware and chose to come over to Franklin. I can't brag enough about these two ladies. They're doing a good job now and I see the potential for them to be a great officer. As far as the next promotion, Sergeant Hurton was promoted to sergeant a few weeks ago. He can't make it tonight. He's doing his national K9 certification, which is three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. He's on his way.
Well, tell Sergeant, we're sorry he couldn't make it here because we've got a great big crowd here to welcome those folks to our ranks. So thank you for becoming a part of our team with the police department and to the town of Franklin. We know you'll do a great job. Got good leadership, good potential over there. Thank you and welcome aboard. Okay, at this time, it gives me great pleasure to recognize our chaplains. And I think speaking for our chaplains, Ms. Bonnie Pegg's is going to bring her, throw the team members up and she can introduce everyone at the same time and we'll turn the program over to her.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much for allowing us to be here. I am Bonnie Pegg's with Danny Antoine and Davis Hooper. The three of us are chaplains for six of our departments. We do chaplaincy for Franklin Police Department, Franklin Fire Department, Macon County Sheriff's Department, Macon County EMS, Macon County State Troopers, and Macon County Dispatches. It is an honor and a privilege for us to be able to do that. We do a number of the things in our role as chaplains. It's something that we feel very deeply about. And this year, we recognize that we have so many of our first responders that we work with that go above and beyond, they're normal above and beyond. And so the three of us got together and we said, we need to recognize them. And so we have nominations that go out and chiefs, supervisors over them, give us nominations. Anybody can give a nomination. And then the three of us make a selection based on those nominations of who will be with the recipient. They get a plaque, a letter from us and six, yeah, $60 gift certificate to Haywood Smokehouse. So we get that barbecue. So the three of us tonight are going to recognize one of our Franklin police officers and two of our Franklin firefighters. So if you don't mind, we will ask them to come forward. From the Franklin Fire Department, Mark Stanfield.
All right, and from the Franklin Police Department, Mr. Garrett Hovis.
And I've got an award tonight for the Franklin Fire Department goes to Joe Templeton. He's not able to be here tonight. So I'd ask Chief Fordman to come and carry this to him.
Do I have to get him a gift certificate?
What game hiding a gift certificate?
So thank you again very much for allowing us to be here and give this presentation. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all, your chaplains, for what you do. We really appreciate your service. Thank you. Okay, so item number six is our public session and we have somebody signed up to speak in public session. We have three people who've signed up to speak and the first speaker we have tonight for public comment is Mr. Dave Lynn.
Good evening. Just want to tell you all, thank you again for everything you all do. And tonight I come to you on about the social district law. I mean, as we came back in August, we talked about AD's flashback being too big for the breweries. I hope tonight you think about it and think about Main Street and all that stuff too because we've already planned on next year being biggest ever. This year, we raised $27,000 for the hospital. I think with the social district law, I think it'd help out a lot more too. So please, tonight, think about the social district, how it benefits everybody here in town and Macon County. I'd be happy to show you some information if you ever want to see it about how many people come to the events. So, but please, I just want to come and say, think about social district and helping out AD's flashback and all the other events that could benefit from it, especially the businesses on Main Street.
Thank you, Dave. Our next speaker is Colin McGinnis.
She'll only take half an hour from this. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity and thank you for what you do. I want to echo what Dave said about the social district. I'm one of the co-owners of Gracious Place on Main and we just think it's a tremendous opportunity to continue building on what we've got from a town perspective and what draws folks to the downtown area. And if we can continue to focus on that and make that grow, I think it's only beneficial to what we're trying to do as a community. And we appreciate your support and thinking about that and considering that. But a tremendous opportunity, not just for the businesses on Main Street, but for the entire community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And our third speaker is Graham Norris.
Thank you all for letting us be here. My name is Graham Norris, head for Lazy Hiker Brewing Company and I spoke to you all before and I just want to come again to, on behalf of Lazy Hiker, to show our full support for the council as you consider the social district. We've seen huge benefits to the town, to our business, to the businesses downtown and our civil legislation as they've had the social district in place for about a year and a half now. Seen nothing but positives. And as I've mentioned before, do we know that the opportunity to have a social district can bring in more dollars through tourism. It can bring and help keep more of our local dollars here in town rather than going other places. And our experiences with what we've seen in Silva, as well as the experiences we've had by talking to so many other guild members that have social districts throughout Northern Carolina, has been nothing but positive for the economy in downtown areas. So we encourage you to consider and show your full support.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who came in, didn't get a chance to sign up to speak in public session? Yes, sir. If you would, come forward and give us your name.
Okay. My name's Dion Senna. I'm a farmer here in the community and also slanted window tasting station. I'm a farmer of grapes and my product, I can't display it, can't sell it in town. I can't take it to the farmer's market and that would be wine. And I would encourage you, my restaurants on Harrison Avenue, I'm not on Main Street, and the opportunities I support for everybody and we all spend local. Everybody that's here on Main Street comes and spends with me and I spend with them. I just think it's a great community thing that we support, like my other people in front of me have said, it's an opportunity for us to do what's good for all of us in this community, especially the retailers and the restaurants, the breweries and the sole winery. I'm the first and only, my wife and I are the first and only licensed winery in Macon County. So we appreciate that distinction, but at the same time, we'd like to share it. But thank you for your time and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not, we'll close our public comment session and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing. And, um, public hearing, uh, to receive input on rezoning of property located at 311 Golf View Drive, uh, from residential R1 to neighborhood mixed use. Our accountant, Mr. Justin Setser, will give us the details on that. Mr. Setser.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Yeah, in your packet you'll see a rezoning application from Mr. David Fortner. He's an applicant who represents a party of individuals. They recently purchased a piece of property off of Golf View, between Golf View and Womack, 10.28 acres. It's in the town and in ETJ. It's currently zoned residential, R1, and they're requesting to have it rezoned to neighborhood mixed use. In the packet you'll see the current zoning map where it shows it's highlighted in blue that it is, pretty much it's residential. It's surrounded by residential except for the neighborhood mixed use to the east. And then you will see their future land use map attached where it's, uh, the area is all recommended for a residential, low, median density residential. And then there is, there's an area of the property as well in there. I've also submitted the differences, snippet from our UDO. It's, uh, chapter 122020, which is R1 and uses the uses and, uh, the uses and Rhonda's disturbing.
But she's sorry.
And then the neighborhood mixed use, the distinction between the two, the uses that are allowed. And then you will also find my staff report with the schedule of the meetings and events leading up. And then you will find the findings of facts and the consistency statements on the planning board where the planning board did submit, did recommend for approval, but they did have some concerns on traffic and some uses in the area, being a prominent residential area. That's the overview that I have of the property. I know the applicants are here as well. I'll turn over to them if that's not too.
Anyone have a question for Justin before we open the public hearing? If not, we'll officially open the public hearing and the first speaker that we have is Debbie Talent.
Thank you for allowing me to speak and I know many of you know me, I'm Debbie Talent and I live on Womack Street. I grew up there. I live in the house that my parents built 70 years ago, so I've seen a lot of changes on Womack Street. And it's always been residential and I would like to see it continue to be residential. Now, I don't know these gentlemen and I'm sure they're wonderful, outstanding people and it's nothing against them personally, but I would just like to see the street, the area remain residential. We need housing desperately and that's the ideal location. And I think if a builder had been aware of what they could have gotten the property for, they would have bought it. And as Justin said, it's surrounded by residential areas except for the part that faces the Georgia Road, which is the Crawford and Higdon properties. And then you've got the Fisher property and then on toward town, it's residential up to Smoking Out in Foot and to the south, it's residential down to State Farm. Womack Street certainly cannot handle any more traffic. It's like a major thoroughfare. Oops. I'm sorry. I talk with my hands, so.
Other than Mr. Kopp, I have a motion signature.
Sorry, David. And I would like for you to consider keeping it residential. I just, you know, I can't see changing it. I really can't. So I'd love to see houses there. I think that property could easily handle 20 to 40 houses, which without, you know, 40 to 80 cars and that's it. And I think we could handle that rather than a constant rush. I'm right across from property owned by the church and my fear is that should it be rezoned, and I know that on the little card that was placed around the neighborhood, it indicates that they're allowing four some houses, but there's no guarantee that there will be houses built. There's no guarantee that they won't sell part of the property that they don't need and that will be another commercial business that goes in there. Then the church may decide, we don't need all this property, so let's see if we can get it rezoned. And then you've got a domino effect of commercial businesses and you're splitting up the entire neighborhood. And I just don't think that's the way that Franklin needs to go. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is J.D. Williams.
Mr. Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Unlike the voice, my objections to the rezoning, uh, the property is residential, the surrounding area is indeed residential. The existing infrastructure really can't handle any more commercial type traffic. We've got a golf course that brings in a fair amount of traffic. We've got a school that is on Promise Street in between Golf View and Womack. There's also a church and a playground. I can tell you that the traffic on Promise is restricted from at least 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And it's also uses a cut through already and people coming from downtown will make a short journey on Womack up Promise and then go up Golf View Drive. So in addition to that, all of, all in any of stormwater is going to be, just because of topography, people end up down on Womack Street and I don't feel confident that it can handle that from a 10 acre parcel, which if it's done commercial, could have an abundance of impervial soil. So it's going to require at minimum some sort of stormwater detention. And where does it go from there? It doesn't appear to be any storm drainage system just besides your normal drainage alongside of the road. In addition, Golf 35 is a rather narrow road. If you ever had a chance to go down it, when cars pass, they generally slow and pull over to the side. You can note the ruts on the side of the road and I'm sure there's been one or two lost mirrors on that. It also has, when, there's a rush of traffic when school, people are dropping off at school and when school is released from the Christian school next door. And there's also a flush of traffic. The golf course seems to do what I consider a bit twilight business. It seems, it's a night hole course and it seems a lot of the residents take advantage of that, the afternoon hours, particularly in the summertime. And I think it has several, not sure if they're exactly a golf league, but they call them scrambles and it draws a lot of golfers and at the same time. So it's influx kind of on the same time schedule. And I just don't believe the infrastructure can handle a commercial development. In addition, I'd change it if it ain't broke. It's been residential apparently forever. Around the golf course where it was originally developed, was all developed as residential lots. And if you look at the plaque, it'll show that they are all individual lots and that's the intent, at least at this point, barring any rezoning. So, I don't think the infrastructure can handle it and I ask you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Jenkins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council and fellow neighbors. Thank you for having us tonight and hearing our feedback regarding this rezoning. Again, my name is Michael Jenkins and my wife and I own 129 Golf View Drive. And as you can see, looking at the map here, we are the highlight of the area there. So we are fully encapsulated by, by the property that's up for discussion. And so I had hoped to this point that I would be contacted by the developers. To date, I have not. I have heard from some other neighbors that they have been contacted. I personally have not, where's my wife. So I'm kind of operating on hearsay. So if I do get something wrong, that's, I guess, that's on me because I don't have all the information, haven't seen a drawing just yet. And so operating under those conditions. But a couple of items that I want to bring to attention is, we have a major, and I echo Mrs. Talent and Mr. Williams as well, of course, I speak primarily for Golf View. We have a, a major traffic issue right now on Golf View as it, as it stands with the businesses, with the school, with the church. And so basically, it's, it's almost at max capacity for what it seems now. If you look at the front of our yard, you can tell, we've been there three years now, you can tell that the traffic has continued to inch into our, our property there and cut off the end of our, our actual yard there, which our, our children play in, dogs, family and all that. And so that's a big concern of ours. We've had to have the highway patrol come out on multiple occasions. We've had multiple wrecks into the trees along our property there, coming into the Golf View from the Georgia roadside. And, and as the others have spoken, the, the golf course causes a lot of speed, I believe, in the evenings after, after people have played golf. And so that's a pretty big concern there. So just increasing the traffic on that road would, would be tough, honestly. So I would encourage us to do a TIA on that. It's probably already underway, it may be, maybe not, but I would certainly encourage that. Also, secondly, I'd like to bring up, and it's the developers, whom of which I, I know most of them and I think they're upstanding people. So it's nothing personal against it. It's just now in my backyard and is regarding my biggest asset, which is our property where my family and I live. And so, you know, in terms of us living there and, and being there daily, we see the different traffic patterns and things like that. But also, one of the bigger concerns is we have an easement for our water and sewer that goes from our property on Golf View down to the edge of Womack Street. And so I would be concerned because again, I haven't seen a plan. I don't know what, there might be something scheduled to be in that easement. I would imagine not, but never, never know. So I, I would like to see that before I really form an opinion on that. And lastly, like the others have stated already, the future use of the, of the land. You know, should ownership change in the future? If this property is, is rezoned, we, we have no real control over what actually gets put there and additional traffic and people in the surrounding areas. So again, thank you so much for, for having this hearing and allowing us to borrow feedback. Thank you.
We have one statement presented by Bonnie Edwards and, oh, we have two? Do we have another one? Now, I'm going to ask if our clerk could read this into the record since, unless Mr. Edwards is here and wants to present it himself. You Mr. Edwards?
No, I'd like to make a call.
Okay, all right. Well, uh, that's Mr. Bradley, chief, has a copy of it and he would read that into the record. We also have one from Ruth Stillwell. And so we'd like to add, you want to add this one to the record too, if you have a copy of it, but you read those into the record for us, not for us.
To the Town Council, I am a resident of Womack Street and I am opposed to the rezoning of the former Angel property. Here are my reasons. This is a residential area, property to the north, to south and west is zoned residential and while the property to the east is zoned for commercial, all property touching, all the property touching the property in question and affording this portion of the Georgia Road has residences on it. Franklin needs more housing and this is a prime location for it. Had a builder realized the low cost of the property or that it could be negotiated down, I think they would have purchased it. Womack Street and or Golf View Drive cannot handle the traffic that the fitness and karate school would bring to the neighborhood. It's almost impossible to pull out of my drive from 4:40 to 8:30 AM and from 3:00 to 6:30 PM during the week due to the school traffic and people using Womack Street as a cut through to the Georgia Road or to the Murphy Road. People do not, people don't live on this road generally, drive faster than the posted speed limit, making it dangerous. Rezoning to mixed use commercial will decrease property values. Thank you for letting me share my opinion, my Edwards. Dear Councilmembers, my husband and I are residents of 645 Womack Street. We purchased our house six years ago in this nice, safe and quiet neighborhood. Since the roundabout has been built, the traffic flow on our street is like a thoroughfare. People have no regard for speed limit and the resident or the residence driveways. To the left of my drive is a hill. I look to the left and then to the right numerous times before exiting. However, numerous times when I exit my drive onto the street, a car will have topped the hill flying. It is right on my bumper. Also, since so much traffic uses Womack to just pass through, when they come to the stop sign on the old Murphy Road, there's another problem. To the left is a blind curve around the cemetery. When sitting on my porch, I hear squealing of tires when someone pulls out in front of oncoming cars. We do not need any more entrances on Womack. We definitely do not need more traffic than business, that businesses would create. I'm sure not, I'm sure we are not the only ones that purchase homes in what should be a nice, quiet neighborhood, a cemetery, a church and a Christian school. Please deny this request for rezoning of this area. Please, please leave it residential. Sincerely, Ruth Stillwell. Sincerely, Ruth Stillwell.
Now, if you would like to come and speak, if you would come to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name is Ken Champlin. And I own a house down on North Womack Street. And I've got a branch that runs to the property that Don Croft had told me about, this branch that ran through his property in the 1930s. There's water that runs off of the bottom part of your ten acre parcel. And that's been running for, I don't know how long. It's a branch that runs off the top of Golf View Drive. There's several other water sources. And that needs to be looked into before they start digging up the property. And if you're gonna have property developed, you're gonna have asphalt and concrete and storm drains. And I live just south of that on North Womack Street. North Womack Street is very narrow, extremely narrow, just like Womack Street is very narrow. There's never been any side blocks there of any type. So those considerations of the roadbed and the water that runs out of these creeks need to be addressed and presented to the public before you really jump into this. I own my property, I own my house. And there's a creek that runs through there. And there's a sewer line that runs through that North Womack area. And it empties out the housing development behind the, the Italian restaurant and the tattoo parlor. There's already a sewer line that's running at a, at a busy level. And these, these things need to get looked into. The roads, the sewer system, and the, and the streams that run through there. And just developing it for money's sake is, is not a smart answer.
Thank you, sir. Was there anyone else? Was there, was there anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign up who would like to speak in the public hearing? Yes?
May I ask you?
Please come forward and give us your name.
Hi, my name is Christopher Evans. Somebody might know me. And me and my wife are currently residents of Womack Street. And I'm not gonna be a very popular person here tonight, it seems. But we are for the cava buildings that are going on there. We spoke to a friend of the family who's been in the real estate business for a very long time, very well-known. And he said that anytime that he shown off that land, that the idea was anyone looking at it wanted to put apartments in there. And if you wanna talk about adding housing, that's one thing. But for us, if you're gonna add apartments, you're gonna be adding a lot more traffic than if you were to add a residential area. And we have the benefit of speaking with a few members here that came to our house and had a handout for us. And I really support having more youth programs that they're going to offer and after-school activity. I didn't come here planning to speak, but I felt bad because I figured someone would be for it. I just think there's not, people always talk about Franklin not having enough to do for young people. And when we spoke with these gentlemen, they told us that they wanna have, almost like a Y M C A. Of course, it's gonna be a gym, there's gonna be some businesses going on with it. There's gonna be a lot of after-youth programs, after-school programs, summer programs for the youth. And I think that they really talk about adding, you know, a walking track and having a park. And I can go on and on, everybody has the handout they've given. But I just think that, that would be a nice thing to have. Something else for young people to go to, I don't think. The problem is, I think, traffic on Womack Street has always been a problem. I'm always afraid I'm gonna die in my ditch when I'm weed eating it. But that's not gonna change, I don't think. And as long as the population of Franklin continues to increase and to grow, then you can put as many houses as you'd like in that area. I don't think the through traffic's gonna stop unless something was done as far as restructuring the roads, speed bumps, maybe even having the city police sit in and actually try to stop that. But I think that's also outside of district, I'm talking out of turn. But again, I just wanna say, I think it's a good idea. I think it would be nice to have something more in Franklin for people to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, y'all, my time's long enough.
Let everybody know who you are.
I'm Roger Talent. And since 1959, when mom and daddy built a house, we've lived on Womack Street. And I've always had a few of those woods, and we've played in them. And we have rode bicycles, and we have done skateboards. And we walk, we walk back and forth to school on those streets with no side blocks. But none of those activities are safe today. You can't even pull out of your driveway, for those of us that live on Womack. Or, or the feeder streets, for that matter, whether it's North Womack, Talent, or Farmer's Hills. I had a neighborhood meeting last Monday night with people. They were invited to come to the house. And Kavod was invited to come, and they did. And we wanted to sit and talk with each other in full transparency as to what their plans were, what their vision was, their mission. Because a lot of, a lot of people don't know who they are. And I just felt like before we can make a good judgment on what's going in and what they're doing, we need to know what their plans are. Now, they did come around and visit with some people, leave some brochures, and that was very helpful. But it was also confusing, I'll be honest. We were trying to interpret what they had put on the postcard. But I've received nothing but frank transparency. These, these people are, are, they have good intentions. I don't believe it's a money issue. I think it is a community issue. Yes, we need housing. But my fear is housing, whether it's housing or mixed use. We're gonna have a traffic problem on Womack Street, as well as Golf View Drive. But because we're already a through street on Womack, it's gonna get worse. And if we don't have control points, regardless of what goes in over there. My, I know people have looked at that property to build. I don't know what medium-density capacity for houses are. I couldn't get that far into the government database in Macon County to see what medium-density required or, or the limits. But a lot of houses, a lot of cars, drainage problems gonna be there, runoff's gonna be there, we've gotta have utilities in there. So it really, at this point, it doesn't matter what goes in there. There's gonna be issues that have to be addressed. And, yes, traffic, regardless. I don't particularly wanna look out on the back of somebody's yard anymore, ever. I never have had to. Doesn't mean that I'm gonna be selfish and say if that's what it is, that's what it is. I understand that. But with the conditions that I think a traffic study would require, and I'm a little confused about this. If a tra, a traffic study has to come back from the state and tell the owners, yes, you can, or no, you can, and where you can, and where you can. So I think that would probably be required regardless of it's a facility like theirs or I'm a developer and I'm gonna put houses in there. So I don't understand those processes. The traffic study says, yes, you can, or no, you can. And they've already bought the property, or developers already started developing. So we're kind of backing into this. But I am, I am not against them. I'm not against what they're doing. I just think we've got to really think about what it's gonna do to the traffic on Womack Street, as well as Golf View. But I said, I can't, I can't get out of my driveway. We're having, we have to go through our, my yard to the lower driveway. And kids walking, whether it's housing development, they're walking to school, it's gonna be an issue. So I don't want them to think everybody's against me, because I'm not either. I'm just trying to be neutral.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Yes, sir.
What's up? What's going on? Can you hear me? Alright, so I might need to shift. Once again, Mayor, thank you, Town Council, thank you for your time. This might shift the trajectory, and if I need to pause and wait, I will do that. But I am...
Excuse me, did, did you get his name?
Sorry, Travis. I am the owner of Kavod Fitness. And Danny is my father, he owns Karate School. And then this bearded man right here, he owns a nonprofit that we all kind of do the same mission. The idea of our businesses was to restore the family unit on God, to bring the community together, and just to kind of bring back some, some simplicity in life. Bring back fathers, bring back mothers. So that's what we've been doing in our businesses. But to address the current issue at hand, we've heard from, whether it's the neighbors, or the planning board, or some of the members of the Town Council, that it is less about what we're doing and more about the zoning and what could come in after us. And we totally understand that. And we don't know what to expect in the next 15, 20 years. I'd love to say that our kids take it over, and it never stops. But we'll be realistic with that. So we've been kind of told the idea of conditional zoning, so that way if something does happen, something else can't come in after us that the neighbors wouldn't wanna have. And we totally understand that and are, would, would love to do that. And I understand that you guys might have to get approval or something with a stake with that. But we would love to do conditional zoning and work with you guys and obviously with the neighbors on how to do that. And we've met, so I apologize, Michael, for not coming over to you. We walked all over Womack Street, left out signs, left out little postcards. We actually had a little barbecue, and we were just like, hey, what do you guys need? Like, what, what's the problem here? Traffic is a problem, what else? What do you guys like to see, what would you like to have? And we've heard more things for the kids to do, that we walk at the cemetery, and it's kind of creepy. And we would love to have a park to walk in, and a nature trail to walk in. So we had put in some houses on our design because we had heard from the planning board that there is a housing need. We're like, sure, we'll, we'll do some of that. We'll put in a park, we'll put in a playground. We want this place to be open to the local community and then also Franklin to be able to come, their kids to have a place to play and hang out. I'm the president of Macon Youth Football. So I've been running it for the last few years. There's over 200 kids there. And the amount of kids that don't have mothers and fathers and who are in a tough situation, and we see it. And their outlet is sports. And then sometimes when sports is over, if they don't like that sport, they don't have anywhere to go. So we wanna create a home for that. So that is our idea of what we're doing. And we know that traffic's an issue. We would love to work with the D O T and whoever we need to, to, A, make our traffic not impact the neighbors and also maybe help out the current traffic that's there. We definitely see that's a need, and we absolutely wanna meet all of these needs because the focus is family, the focus is community. And we don't wanna come in and just make money and make everything harder on everybody. But we know that we don't know. And we would love to have a conditional use. That way, if something happens afterwards, you guys don't have a business in there that you guys don't want. But the main idea is to be a part of the community, to help, to give back. And that's kind of the route that we would like to go. So not zoning commercial, not mixed use, but a conditional use that's something that we can both neighbors and Town Council work on to kind of figure out. That's all we got.
I'm Danny Antoine. I do own the Karate Academy with my wife. Recently, you know, the Karate Academy and Kavod Fitness have merged together. Because our goal and our vision has been for families in this community. Never do we wanna enter into anywhere and disrupt what's going on. We wanna be able to enhance that. You know, we talk about having a drug problem for the youth here. But to me, a lot of times, we try to put a Band-Aid on a bullet wound and set it attacking that thing from the very beginning. You know, my part in the community, the Karate School's been there for over 20 years now. We've helped raise a lot of families there. So right now, I'm on the second generation of kids. That means the kids that I used to have that are now adults, they've brought their kids, now I have their kids on the karate floor. So it's more of a family, it's more of a home environment that we create. We work very closely with the school systems, we work very closely also with D S S. So we provide a service that's beneficial to the entire county, it's not just for a particular group. You know, as we had a meeting, you know, over in the neighborhood, it was awesome to get to hear what their concerns were. You know, and one of the concern, one of the main concerns has been the traffic. And, you know, if you, when you look at the property, where we're gonna have the entrances, you know, it's gonna be more on the corners of the property. So our, our traffic for the bit, for the actual businesses won't actually be using the Womack Street as a thoroughfare. So in other words, somebody who's coming off of the Georgia road, they're not gonna go all the way down to Womack, all the way down Womack Street to get to the other end to be able to come in, because there's gonna be an entrance close to the Georgia road. But there's also gonna be an entrance close to Palmer Road. So we're trying to work on figuring out ways that we can help them alleviate the traffic issue, you know, that they have there. We don't wanna disrupt what's there, but we do wanna enhance there. Just like my son just spoke about, just the different issues like walking at the cemetery. You know, what we plan on doing is putting a nature trail around the whole property. So everyone in the neighborhood can freely come down and use that. Their kids in the neighborhood, they get to come down and use a playground that we'll have there. So what we have in essence as a business, it's really a home. And that's what we're trying to do, is try to bring families back together. A lot of the issues that we're seeing in society right now has a lot to do with the breakdown of families. You know, we point the finger at so many different things without understanding the root. And the root of it is within families. You know, there was a time when there was a lot of single mothers that were bringing in the kids. Now it's grandparents that are bringing the kids, because both parents have checked out. So it's an issue, it's a family issue. So our vision is to restore families to start alleviating these issues from the very beginning, instead of waiting until it's already gotten out of hand to try to get to it at that point. So I do hear the concerns within the neighborhood, but I do wanna make it clear that we're not coming in to try to disrupt anything. We're trying to actually enhance, not just within the neighborhood, but also within Macon County. So thank you guys for the time. Hope that helps for everyone that's here.
Is there anyone else?
Is there an opportunity for a rebuttal? I've already spoken.
No.
Let's see if anyone else who hasn't spoken would like to speak. If you have additional comments, you can do, as we had earlier, two written comments, and we'll take those and present those as part of our minutes for the board to review. Mr. Attorney, do we, do we allow people to come back a second time? Or is that normally the procedure is you get to speak once, and then if you have follow-up comments, it's best to put those in writing?
Yes, and if there's anything to write too. And I do wanna clarify, Travis, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
Sure.
I, what, what he said, I took the mean. Are you withdrawing the, the application for now to see whether the town's gonna consider adopting some traditional zoning?
Yes, we'd like to move forward with the deal.
So this, I don't, I don't believe, Mr. Mayor, there's anything further to discuss right now. I think we've had a public hearing on a rezoning that's a, a traditional rezoning. We're gonna talk about a new approach to zoning for, for the town. It's been around for a long time, just not here. But I'm understanding they're withdrawing their application at this time.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, do you have anything else before we close the public hearing?
No, I'm just saying, being as the, we're trying to do those before.
Without objection, then we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, I would just suggest, I know a lot of folks came for that purpose, and I would keep the five-minute recess to that.
Well, we'll take, we'll take five minutes, no more. And we'll reconvene in five minutes. Thank you all for being here. If you want to stay, please, feel, feel free to stay. If you need to leave, we understand that as well.
I'm gonna cut the audio while they're in recess. I'll start it again when the meeting starts.
I'll start it again when the meeting starts.
Discussion.
Tom, what's the timeline that we, once this passes, if it passes?
Um, I think we basically, we don't have to go to court at the right now. This is, as I told you, this is the, this is the interim proceeding that's against the property. And there's a good case law out there that says, basically, you've given them an opportunity to clean it up, and it hasn't happened. A lawful order like this is good enough for a town planer to move forward with, with the cause of demolition act.
Or the backhoe, what if he has a backhoe hook on the property and it's a parent's name?
That's great. You can beat us to the punch whenever you want. We'll need a week or two to get bids lined up. I think we have our other order that we have on another piece of property. We've got some time to go to try to combine those and maybe get a bit of a deal or find, you know, find the best deal on two different demolition processes. Um, so we're, we've got, let's say, we could do it pretty quick.
Okay.
And one answered Mr., the other, Mr. Duncan, the other brother, who's the joint owner. I know that-
Is that the request for a six, additional six months?
Right.
Is that what the, what the, I have not, I have not answered it. So I don't think the town has answered him on that additional request. It's been, you know, a year. The board has six months since the last notification. And so, uh, I guess we're waiting to see if the board will proceed with this before we do anything else.
Well, I may be the contrarian here. I'm not sure what, now that the other owner is out of the hospital and out of surgery, I'm not sure what one more month might hurt. I don't know if feral cats can move back in that quickly or not.
The house is unreliable.
Well, I know the house is unreliable, but also knowing both of the owners, you know, there is, there is the chance that they might be moving on it now that the other Mr. Duncan's out of the hospital.
How long, how much time would it take? Uh, I think before the county, the town would let a contract for demolition, you'd need to get the quotes or bids for that. What, what kind of timeline are we looking at to go through that process?
I, I think a couple of weeks. I mean, we have the advertisement from the last time we did this. It's not hard to change to say, not those properties, but these are the ones we're looking to take bids on, on cleanup, show of services, uh, a couple, three weeks maybe.
So in the meantime, if the property, current property owner wishes to go ahead and do that, there was nothing to stop him before actual demolition would start? The same is true on the other property at the end of Welkey Street?
Yes. And is this a perfect time to ask where we're at with that? That one, we were all, we, again, this was, that was before the 160B change that took away the, the, in personum proceeding. That's what we filed. We got a court order that says, you know, last meeting, and I think it was Mr. Contractor that reminded us that that was even there. It got the building back burners, you know, completely in hurtment. But it's, it's already, you've got a court order that said we can do that. So we're, we're ready to do that.
These things are usually hard for us to budget for, you know. We've got to find, we've got to come pay the contractor and then, and it's, you don't know how much it's going to cost. And you never know whether it will come up or somebody will do something. So it's really, you know, it's really something we've got to come back and kind of move some money around. Budget business, must be budget business, because there's no money in the budget for it, which, moving forward, we might start doing a little something just as a security bundle.
Okay. So November, we have to do a budget amendment.
I think we have a bid to end that time. We have to do a budget.
So that would give them, if, I mean-
If, yeah, excuse me.
Mr. Duncan didn't, in the new letter, he didn't say anything about how quickly he had come up here. I mean, that was early September that, I mean, mid-September. Has anybody else heard from him? I mean, is he driving up as we speak or anything?
I haven't heard anything from him. I don't know if anyone else has.
Frank, shake his head no.
No.
I agree, you know, yeah, it's, it's unreliable and it's been, it's been a nuisance. But, you know, condemning some of the property to a pretty serious wound.
I agree. I think it very, very seriously.
I've been cautious about it and hopeful the whole time that the owners were going to move instead of us having to move.
It would be nice if the owners took the initiative to take care of that situation. But in the meantime, from looking at it, it looks like a health hazard to me.
Well, and I even proposed today the idea, I talked to Amy and Chief about it over the phone, that we could convince them to have the fire department burn it down, train with it or something. But Chief says it's not even suitable for that. It's kind of strategically insane on us all. I just wanted us to, I want us to look at every available option before we take so much more. Because I think that is extremely, very extremely serious.
I, I take it very seriously too, but it was my understanding that when we got a, uh, person to look at these properties, the ordinance review, I mean, to, to look at the properties and to, um, make recommendations on this, that we recognized that it was serious. And I think it was almost a year ago, Dr. Shower, that you came. So it, it's not a new situation. And as a taxpayer, as well as a councilperson, I don't like the idea of, uh, paying Frank to, uh, to do his work that we're, if we're not going to back him up. And we aren't taking his property. We're taking that, my understanding is, we're taking that house. The property is still his, right?
No, here's what we're doing.
We're tearing it down.
I've had, I've got two rules in life after about a year. The woman outlives the man and families don't get along. And I'm thinking right now, we've got a family that's not G-hauling. The town is going to say this, we're going to go, we're going to tear it down, we're going to slick it up, we're going to sell it, we're going to get our money back for what it took to do that, and you get the rest. We're going to handle all of the, is that, isn't that correct? Isn't that about how it would turn out? We're not taking, we're not taking the property. We're, we're marketing the property for the better, for the betterment of the town. And the family has not stepped up in a long enough time period, even though if we go forward tonight, by the time we get bids, by the time they can put it on the schedule, by the time that we can get the budget amendments, that's sixty or ninety days probably. But I'd hate to lose any more time on it.
I would like to add, so say he does start working twenty-one days and we pass all this.
No harm, no foul.
We'd be, go ahead.
We always value voluntary compliance with this rather than the town having to take this.
But to clarify your question, we would be taking the property. We'd be selling it to recover our costs and they would get what's left over. Although, I don't know if we as a town would be that diligent in trying to get prime value out of it.
Well-
Let me, let me make sure I understand this correctly, Joe, if I would. If, if the town goes in and dem, and demolishes the house, and we have a cost of doing that, and that cost can be paid by the property owner. If it's not, then the town has a lien on that property.
That's what I understood, a lien.
And then the property, then if that lien is not satisfied, then the town can go ahead and file foreclosure and sell the property and distribute the proceeds. Is that correct?
Uh, well, yeah.
It can be redeemed by the property owner. You can come in and say you've got fifteen thousand and cleaning this up. Here's fifteen, here's a check.
Okay. That's one more safeguard.
Yeah.
That's one more safeguard.
Town will not make any more. Town will not end this more time. It's just-
Well, I don't think you might have suggested that.
This is the biggest problem with helping neighbors.
If you don't get paid back and, and it gets redeemed, you can go foreclose the lien. You've got to get it served. In which case, you, I hear what you're saying, but it almost, you know, you're forced to market it because there's an upset in the process.
Yes.
There's every, you know, the public will have every opportunity to tell us what it's worth at that point. I mean, it's not like we'll go list it with a realtor. That's true. And are we moving on here to the council?
Want to do them both, both at the same time?
My intent is to, to get these priced at the same time.
We're going to follow the same procedure on both properties at the same time? Get bids on demolition for both of them?
See what we get for bids.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments, discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve, what's the wording I'm looking for, Counselor?
To adopt the ordinance as presented.
To adopt the ordinance as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed, a like sign. The motion carries. The ordinance is adopted and we will proceed, Mr. Sessor, as directed.
And how will, how will the Duncan people, I mean, the Duncan family find out? Will we notify them, John?
It would require my law too, if we can.
Yeah.
I think we have to.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, we'll need to notify them exactly.
Thank you.
Uh, item number eight, call for a public hearing for November sixth to receive public input on proposed rezonings. This is an issue that we've been over several times. Mr. Sessor.
Um, yeah, so a couple of months ago, we had a large rezoning around town. Um, there was one area, um, which I called it the PBC six for proposed zoning change. It was the old Murphy Road, Murphy Road area. I've got it up, you can see it on the map. David should be able to see it. I'm screen sharing it so he can see the updated map. This was, um-
Yeah.
And this map, uh, was an area that council kicked back to planning board. Wanted to see some tweaks because we had some people come and they had some concerns. And planning board has, um, changed, made some changes. Um, really, some of the changes are not changes because they're just recommending not rezoning some of it. Um, and I was going to point them out real quick before we get, so you're aware of the changes, to see this. Um, so we had one, I can't remember the names of each one. We had one individual, if you'll see my cursor on the map here. We had a parcel here, he was, also, if you'll remember, everything was zone commercial. Everything out here was commercial, whether it was gravel road on top of a, you know, just houses. Everything was C-two commercial. Um, and the idea is to make it, uh, more current with what the current uses are. Um, this end piece right here, it's, um, on the old Murphy Road. He had some concern that he was wanting to make it a storage units. And he graded, already had done the grading for storage units and liked it. And storage is something that needs to be commercial. Um, so planning board decided to take it and the parcel aside, so it wasn't just one parcel sitting there all by itself. It's an old shop as well. Um, and then we had an individual that came that was borders the piece, um- the sawmill. And he was saying he'd like it to stay commercial because he'd used it for his construction business and parking trucks there. Planning board kind of went in the middle there and recommended keeping that neighborhood mixed use. They're going to take it to neighborhood mixed use, which still would be allowed to use for, um, what their use, current use is, but not full of all commercial because it's cut off by two pieces of property. It's got a dirt road into it. Um, and then there was a parcel over here across the highway, um, with access off of Nelson, Waldron and Mashen White. And they voted to, they recommended keeping it commercial as well because that was another one of the Mr. Greens came to ask for. And then we tweaked one other area right here where the, um, bed breakfasts is. It was an urban mixed use and we're recommending a change to R1 for that area because bed and breakfasts are allowed in R1. Then there's a couple of houses right beside us. So those were the changes that was made after sending it back. And I wanted to at least let you see them before you set a hearing, make sure you're happy with setting hearing for, et cetera. It's, uh, real quick, um, also in the package, you'll see that either is, there's this map, there's a future land use map, but a current zoning map where you can see everything is zone commercial. A list of parcels, I believe it's a hundred and ten parcels. It's a total of a hundred and fifty-four point zero six acres. It's all in the ETJ. And it shows what the proposed zoning is. And then, of course, staff, comments, and, um, the planning board recommendations and their consistent statement where they did vote unanimously to suggest this rezoning.
Will the affected property owners be notified if the public hearing is-
Same as every, everyone in that whole area will get a letter like you did last time. And I'll put as many signs up as I can. I've ordered more signs. Um, we had lost quite a few over the years, so I ordered more. So I've got ten brand-new shingles that I can put out all around the area of the business.
The recommendation is to call for a public hearing at six oh five PM or shortly thereafter on Monday, November the sixth, to receive public input on this proposed rezoning. Is that correct? Is there a motion as such? That we set the public hearing? We have a motion?
Yes.
And a second? To call for the public hearing on November the sixth for the purpose of receiving public input on these proposed rezonings. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by like sign, motion carries. Notice will be published and owners will be notified in plenty of time to make sure they have the opportunity to be here for public hearing. We'll move on to item number nine, new business, a request approval of closure for some streets. I will refer to our town manager to bring us up to date on those, uh, approved street closures that are being sought at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. Um, the request is for three additional dates for the Philip Street Market. Um, as you know, they've been held in conjunction with picking on the square. The only one that is sort of off with that in the schedule is there is one on October the fourteenth. Um, the new dates, their request is November fourth, the eighteenth, and December the sixteenth. Hours will be from nine AM to four thirty PM, um, just on that small section of Philip Street. And as I said, they've been fairly successful in, in their efforts to this little market that they have.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Say it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the request and the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed by like sign, that motion carries. Item B, Madam Manager.
Um, our ordinance review committee met on September the twenty-fifth to discuss several different, um, amendments to existing ordinances that we have. The first part is from chapter thirty-three, departments, boards and commissions. Um, what it does is actually clarify for the fire chief's duties. We hadn't updated that since the town went to a council manager form of government. So we did make that change to that as well as, um, looking at fire alarm systems are not taken care of by the town. They're done by the fire marshal. So we did leave that in our ordinance. So really, we just clarified in chapter thirty-three what we truly are doing from across the state.
Most of this technical and clarification, I'm sure that the fire chief knows what the fire chief's job is, but it's good to have it in writing as well.
And to whom he reports, or she reports.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? A second? Second, Mr.?
We'll take them all together.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by like sign, that motion carries. And now?
Fifty-two.
Oh, we've got some more?
I didn't.
Did I miss?
We've got chapter fifty-two.
Oh, oh, I was just thirty-three.
That was just thirty-three. We've got fifty-two, ninety-two.
We've got fifty-two and ninety-two then, all right.
Fifty-two is just to clarify the types of pipe specifications that we are allowed to have in the town now. As you know, um, some legislation has come down from the state regarding lead and copper pots. We will no longer allow those to be added to our system. In fact, um, as we're doing the lead and copper inventory, we will probably at some point have to remove those pots from our system. So we will no longer have those. Normally, we have, uh, galvanized pots allowed as part of our system.
It was chapter nineteen, which is where I showed that first.
What will be the motions concerning this?
Just to adopt the, um, the ordinance twenty twenty-three, last year, there were seven as presented.
Okay.
Repeat that, please.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by like sign, that motion carries. Okay. Moving on to ninety-two.
Well, ninety-two is actually in the same ordinance as thirty-three.
All right, so we've got them both together at the same time.
Um, related to fire hydrants, the, the space around the fire hydrants and the maintenance and whose responsibilities that that happens to be, as well as who actually permits for burning inside the city limits. And that's the North Carolina and U.S. Forestry Services. They issue those permits. The only things that can be burned inside the city limits are natural materials. Just because your couch has wood on it does not make it a natural material. So it has to be, you know, leaves and brush and other vegetation.
And you can apply for a permit online and there's specific, uh, restrictions as to what and when you can burn.
Correct. And the other important thing to note is in item D, there are fines associated with that that we can levy against somebody for burning illegally inside the city.
Speaking of fines and fires, we, did we ever get that instituted where we penalized homeowners for false alarms, burglar alarms and that sort of thing? We don't know what to do with that. I'll just turn another time.
That's all right. We can follow up on that.
Okay.
Hey, I want to-
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lee.
It seems to me, I mean, since I moved back home, it seems that every, anybody that I know or have talked to about burning and stuff, they seem to think that you can burn it inside the city limits without asking a soul. So I think we need to get that, at least in the newspaper, that this is a, this is a new, this is a deal. Uh, because I know my neighbors burn all the time and-
If you go by our fire department-
Not you, not you, not you.
If you go by our fire department, there's a big sign there that says, "Don't burn when it's windy," right, Chief?
Yeah, but it doesn't say, but if you're going to call nine, and call whatever. I mean, it doesn't tell you what to do.
You could add, "If you plan on burning, call and get a permit first."
Right.
I'll take care of it.
Because that is a, that's a change for most people, I think.
Yeah.
Not, not, but-
There's not a change in the word, it may be a change to the mindset.
Anything else on item nine? If not, we'll move to item ten. And we have, uh, the pleasure of hearing from our finance director, Sarah Bishop.
Good evening. Um, I don't have a lot to update you guys on since we spoke last, but we are finished with our audit. It was dated for September twenty-eighth, and our auditors told me that is the earliest the town of Franklin has ever dated an audit report. So we're glad to have that done. They will be here on November sixth to present for you guys. Um, sales tax revenue, it continues to do well. Um, I actually have an email I'm going to forward to all of you guys. It's from the North Carolina League of Municipalities. It's a quarterly review on revenues. Um, if you don't want to look at it, you don't have to. But you can toggle down to Macon County, to our municipality. You can look at all across the state, and it just gives you a recap of the last three months. Um, it's interesting information, so just want to let you know, I'm going to share that with you guys. Um, as far as my department, we do have Reagan now, um, who is helping us out. She's been a huge asset. So in moving some things over to her, we're going to be able to open up Ally's position to what we've hired her for and start utilizing her for some more analysis. So, um, that, what she's working on right now, that she's going to present to you guys, hopefully the next meeting, just depending on when we have all the information. We're currently analyzing Memorial Park. We do take in fees when people rent that building, but we have a lot of costs associated with that building. Um, we've not changed the fees on that rental in a long time. So we're really just looking right now at how much money we might be losing, which I believe you guys are going to hear a little bit more than we want to. So, um, but, you know, those are things that we've just not had the staff available to look at. Um, something else that we are looking at, um, not that we're trying to change it, so I don't want the staff to come and lynch me, but we're looking at our take-home vehicle policy, looking at fuel prices, you know, just monitoring those things, just to make sure we're being fiscally responsible. Um, those are the types of things that she is starting to get into and analyzing on a monthly basis. Um, and we will report back on some of those things. But if there are things specifically that you guys would like for us to take a look at or a deeper dive into, contact me and Ally and, and we'll get a plan together and, and work on those. We're just starting to be able to fully utilize her position now that we've got a little more help in our department. So, um, looking forward to what we're able to learn about our processes and what things we're doing really well and maybe what things we need to do a little better at. But, um, yeah, so that's what we're working on right now, but it's all about.
We're very fortunate to have an outstanding finance director, finance department, and we're also very fortunate to have good auditors. To get this audit in this early is amazing. I talk to folks almost every week from municipalities and counties who still not turned their audits in for twenty-one and twenty-two fiscal years. And so they're on what they call the unit assistance list, which is a local government commission steps in and says, "If you're not going to take care of your financial house, we'll run it for you." And they've done that on several municipalities throughout the state. So we're very blessed and very fortunate to have a good staff and a good auditor to do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions for Sir?
Is there a differential when they rent Memorial Park by whether they're in town, out of town, out of camp, state?
There is not.
Okay.
No, we don't. We just charge a set rate of seventy-five dollars to rent it. Um, and I, as long as I've been here, so enough seven years, it's been that price. We've never changed it. Um, so that may be an option we bring before you. Um, we want to make sure we get all the information.
Goodness, sir, we're a lot in service.
I agree, agree. Um, there, there are other things at the park besides just renting the building, I know. But, um, just want you guys to have all the information in front of you, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sessor.
Good evening again, Manhattan Council, that's senior agent, right? I will say, I think staring is going to be a big mistake.
I was already sitting.
Um, yeah, I want to give you updates, you, on a few projects that the planning department's been working on. First one is our Wi-Fi grant that we got from Appalachian Regional Commission. Uh, we have, um, released an RFP, um, on the website, reached out a couple different providers. I've been in contact with three that said they're going to submit proposals. That was submitted back on September twelfth, was when it was released. The deadline is October, um, October the thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth. Um, and so they have to have about four PM, they'll have to submit their proposals. Um, and then we'll go through a selection process. I just want to send probably myself and Amy and Sarah. We'll look at them and decide, you know, and we'll bring, who, uh, we'll notify somebody as long as we get through that process. And then when we come to the town council in your November meeting, hopefully go in with a contract. Um, some other key dates is in the RFP, they have to have the system installed, the equipment installed by, uh, January thirtieth of twenty-four. Uh, the service should be, um, up and running by March first of twenty-four and then needs to be completely closed out by, uh, June thirtieth of twenty-four, so we keep staring.
Justin, is that just the downtown commercial district?
Yes, it's, um, so the map that's in the RFP, it's pretty much everything from Town Hall all the way down Main Street, covers the gazebo, um, all the way down, almost to the Lazy Hiker. And then it's going to cover most of Owl Street that are around the gazebo and then Philip Street. And it's going to cover our two lower parking lots off of Stewart. Because you've got the Farmer's Market and you have other, just adding some stuff down there. Um, so finger crossed, everything comes in, in our budget range. Um, next one is the NC DOT paved trail sidewalk and side path feasibility grant. Um, that's the one we received from NC DOT. That's the grant that's going to study the Crawford Branch Greenway Extension in the boardwalk. Um, we've had, DOT actually hired the consultant for that. We didn't. There's no money coming to the town, they're paid for everything. They're just kind of working on our behalf. They hired Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated. Um, we've had some, given them lots of information, lots of stuff, traffic planning that we have. Had their first meeting with them on September the twenty-second, with some more meetings coming up. Um, we'll be steering committees, some, um, stakeholders, interviews with some of the stakeholders down there in that, in that route. There's a lot of moving pieces in that. It's, uh, so that one will be, it's a good project for this feasibility grant. Um, the other one is the NCDU DEQ CAG grant. That grant is to study the area around the Quasi Mound for some traffic calming, maybe some parking, some rerouting some roads to help with some, some stuff around, hopefully the future development of around the mound. Um, and with that grant, we, we actually decided, we hired, uh, Traffic Planning and Design that's working in that area. We hired them as well to, um, complete that grant and that process. that's working in that area, we hired them as well to, um, complete that grant and that process. Um, we haven't, we've just been giving them some information on that, but we haven't started that yet. We just hired them a couple weeks ago.
Will there be an input process anymore?
Yeah, there'll be some, um, there'll be some stakeholder meetings. I don't know if there'll be like an actual big public meeting because it's not a huge grant. Um, trying to get our best plan for it, but it's probably a $20,000 grant.
Will there be a stakeholder?
Um, anybody else that wants to. Um, and I'll let them know of those meetings we have if anybody wants to attend. Um, the other one is the Sewing Our Seat statue, um, that's moving along. Hopefully the electrical service will be underground hopefully this week. DOT or Duke until, I believe sometime this week, maybe starts next week to get their, uh, their locates to the ground. So hopefully they'll get the work done in that timeframe. Um, and the, the historic trail lady is shooting for a March 2024 date on revealing that site and the statue down there. Um, myself, Council McGuffey and Council Saline have been going to their meetings monthly and, uh, working on a landscape plan and it's going to be something really nice, really good stuff. Um, a bit more on DOT, uh, step 7.0. Um, looks like we're not going to get really no money from the state for Region G, which is the 23 western counties. Um, I think that includes, uh, districts 14 and 13. Um, the state is overutilized, there are some funds, and so the only money that's going to be available will be district funds or division funds, um, which is $118 million in this next round of funding. Um, that's for 14 counties, so that's not going to go very far, so. Um, we submitted some projects and there's some projects from 6.0 where there wasn't any funding. Um, I think they're still trying to catch up from COVID. So I wouldn't expect any major projects of that. And then Scott Griffin Hotel, October 10th, mark that date. That's the date the State Historic Preservation Office is going to hear about our historic district proposal downtown, which is a major funding, um, for this project. We pretty much need, uh, to get a favorable report back from them that they would consider creating a historic district. So October 10th, hopefully for that week, I don't know how they decide that day or if they have a wait period where they make decisions, but that's the date that's on their agenda to be heard. Uh, but everything with opportunity Appalachia, we've received all our, everything we were promised, architectural, engineering, business plans, everything. And we have, we have, um, some operators interested and some developers interested. And we've got some funders interested and we just, that historic funding is a big piece to close the gap to make that project, um, profitable for whoever wants to come in. And then the last thing I've got, everybody should have at your table, I just laid out. I get these every month for our charging station out front. Um, you should see a six week, that's been held over a year. Um, shows you how many charges we've had, what the revenue is, the CO2 offset, gallons of gas saved. Um, there's been 1,443 charging stations at that level three charging station since it's been put in. And it gets used quite a bit and there's a, shows you the peak hours when it gets used also in the city, so the time of day, which I think knew, knew in 1:00 PM are the peak, are the deep times.
Who gets this revenue?
Um, I think that goes back to a third-party company, uh, that handles it. I think it's, this, this is, a report comes from Shell. So there, and I think it's the Shell app that runs the top of the fund. I assume that's where it goes.
So can you tell us what's going on with the Quasi Initiative and kind of what they're, are they doing anything for, or is that? Uh, what he mentioned, those, that's why I was... Oh, gotcha, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear that because you brought it up. Yeah.
That's all I got.
I get the question every once in a while, Justin, you know, the highway fund is primarily funded by the tax on gasoline. And as we increase the number of electric vehicles, we're reducing the amount of gasoline that's being purchased, which means you're reducing the amount of taxes that are going into the fund. Has anybody that you've heard of talked about how they're going to recuperate, recoup money from electric vehicles to help maintain our roads? Does anybody have that discussion?
I've heard some, just, you know, relevant hearsay of how that may be, but I've not heard anything official. I've probably just researched to figure out something, or seen what, but I'd say that's probably a, uh, raw question.
They'll find a way to get a tax on it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Justin?
I think my smartest, I was going to ask if there's any data on how much power is used on this, kind of live pulling up.
Justin, well, the, the study that Stacy wants to be in on, will it go all the way to the bridge or no?
The tag grant one?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's pretty much from Big Bear Lane, back to Depot, it's all that in northeast Maine, east Maine, all that around Quasi Mound.
Okay.
You've got no reason not to have electric vehicles.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Now I recognize Chief Holler.
Special place.
Good evening.
We prefer to leave it alone.
What? I'm sorry.
You're still catching me.
He wants to sit.
I will stand up next time, I'm sorry. I didn't even think about it.
Okay. So I'm not going to bore you with a number since I'll get them out of the reports. Comes redundant if I go over again. And I don't, I can't everything, it was a very flashy, fancy PowerPoint like Chief Orman does. I just want to show you some pictures and kind of catch you up on what we've been doing since I missed my last update in DY. First of all, some of our current events going on is, uh, we started a food drive about two weeks ago. Myself and Sarah are on the Carinet Board and we, uh, had a meeting, I guess it's three weeks ago now. There is a extreme shortage of food supply for Carinet. They get their food from Manah Food Bank and they're, have become more restrictive on what they allow Carinet to buy. So our local Carinet's been having purchase from local stores, which means there's a middleman, costs more money. So I thought we'd do our part, as little as it is, to do a food drive at the police department and fill the police car up. We have had some participation and probably half the backseat full. So I'm going to keep that running indefinitely until we get that going. And, uh, maybe relocate to some grocery stores just as people exit, they can throw some food in the backseat. Um, update on the No Wrong Door, uh, day station. Myself and Warren Cave with Mercy Management, we had a meeting with No Wrong Door a couple weeks ago. And we're going to develop a training class for volunteers that, that manage the day station for safety measures, any medical emergencies. So we're developing that to, and we haven't decided if we want to do a video training or a PowerPoint training for all the volunteers, which they kind of have a shortage of volunteers volunteering right now. They're asking the churches to help out so far. And so we'll get that going soon and hopefully they'll get it open in the very near future. Um, I guess as you all saw last week, we had a joint task force roundup last Tuesday with the Sheriff's Office and other agencies that assisted us. It was an eight-month investigation. Uh, they named it Operation Ice Storm. And as you can see there, there's some of the amounts of drugs that we seized from this eight-month-long investigation. Primarily the dangerous drugs on there would be methamphetamine and fentanyl. Uh, I'm very impressed with fentanyl that the task force has gotten off the streets. It helps a little bit, but we just want to put this image out there and a message out there that if you come through Franklin, um, we want you to make, you know, think twice and, uh, you know, be a little nervous when you come through town with your drugs. So back in August, we had a missing person case and we made national news with that. As mind-new as it was, I don't know how we made national news, but it was on CNN, the Huffington Post, People Magazine, the US Sun, Law &amp; Crime, Dan Abrams Live and some other news outlets across the country, which is kind of amazing that they're interested in such a small story, but I guess drawing sales in the media world. Um, some updates on our homeless. Uh, it's still a consistent issue. And one site that we worked probably the past month was located between the Rotary Pavilion on the Greenway and Subway on the Island Road in that wooded area. So there's one picture of it. There's probably six or seven people in and out of that homeless site living. Um, we walk in there daily and basically just give them warnings, give them reasonable time to, you know, displace somewhere else. A few weeks later, we, uh, finally began writing tickets. I actually wrote three of the camping on public property ordinance that was passed a few months ago. Since it's on the Greenway property, I wrote three of those. The next week, we, uh, went down there, whoops, and we wrote some trespassing. We wrote some trespassing charges and littering charges on State Citation. So we got two of those in court. I went down there this morning and took this picture, so that's what's left. So that's what's in the woods in the Greenways. I don't know who's going to pick it up, even though we wrote a littering ticket. I don't mean everyone will go pick all that up, so. Probably the Greenway is responsible for that and that's a lot of trash.
You mean the volunteers?
No, it's staff. They have two full-time staff.
Okay, the county, okay.
It needs to be people who will do community service.
Yeah, and we do still participate in community service, but to get them to come and do community service is one thing. Um, it's very sporadic. And every now and then we get a, a good person wants to pay back their debt to society and comes and knocks it out. It's very few and far to none. Okay, and some of the equipment we've acquired over the past few months is, uh, Nanahale Bike Shop was gracious enough to donate us this electric bicycle, which is a very fun ride. And, um, we had used it, as soon as we got it, we used it at the July 4th festivities downtown. We plan to use it probably this weekend with the Ford events we have downtown and of course the pumpkin fest coming up, so. That's a very nice asset for us to have and it'd be very beneficial on the Greenway as well. Uh, if you remember back in May, the American Legion gave us a gracious donation, which I used to purchase two of these Fleer monoculars for use in search and rescue or suspect apprehension, events recovery, numerous things that they can be used for. There's an example of a picture of someone holding a gun, uh, shows their body heat to be useful to locate at night and it even works during the day. Like I said, it uses body heat to pick up images. Um, even at night, our patrol can use them to scan parking lots. Uh, you can tell what your vehicles are recently, you know, running, so you can tell if somebody's around, uh, especially in the deep hours of the night. There's some of our rounded people. There were 12 of those, um, and they're major, you know, pretty major drug runners in our community. Uh, also a few months ago, we began a program with Ring cameras. I don't know if you're familiar with the Ring camera. Um, they're mainly for home surveillance. But they have a public safety for Ring, or I'm sorry, Ring for Public Safety. And it's a program that we can use to send out, it's almost like their own social media platform, but we can use it to send out, uh, crime reports, um, events, safety information, just a wide variety. This is an example, I took a screenshot. Last week we had a, some car break-ins at the Greenway. I used it to post a picture of the suspect leaving Walmart. And then you'll see the map to the right. It sends a, that post to every Ring owner in our jurisdiction. And so they get an alert on their Ring app. It's also used if we had a serious crime in a certain area, we could send out a request and every Ring owner, they can check their cameras and send us any video they have of suspects or missing persons.
I'm still don't love that even if you don't have a Ring camera.
That's correct. You don't have to have a Ring camera. Um, it's handy to have. I mean, a lot of people I've noticed, my neighbors use it. If I lost a dog, lost a cat, um, a couple of them had posted a bear in the neighborhood, so. So it's another way to bring the community together with law enforcement. I've used it a lot for safety information given out, especially when schools started and pedestrian driver safety when schools started. Uh, so. So back in July, I purchased some mobile cameras that we've been using to put around our trouble areas and that's a picture of four of them there. They're still with their cameras. Um, so far, they've helped us tremendously. Uh, since we have been low-staffed, trying to think how to work smarter and better serve our community. So we've been deploying these cameras on the public property or private property with permission of the owner. And we just put them in our hotspot areas. Um, that way we can keep a better eye and monitor the activity certain times of the day. Currently, our supervisors have access to this 24/7, so every time these devices take a picture, they actually take two pictures and a 10-second video. It immediately sends it to our, an app which we all have on our phones, so they can somewhat monitor almost live what's going on in that area. Those two pictures I passed up, um, that's one I have behind a shopping center that's, we've had some nuisance problems, but you can tell those people are rummaging through trash cans and that was actually about a month ago. That homeless sub that I just showed you, this is, uh, some of, I had it set up there at the Pavilion and we could watch them in and out all day so we could know when they all went in, when they all went up, so we could catch them there at a certain time, so we wouldn't actually waste our time on them. Uh, that's at our own skate park that actually blessed us yesterday, so with people, the skate park is constantly, there's traffic through there all hours of the night. Lots of, just, people are using it for, you know, the right reasons, but then you got your, just that area of town, that's where most of the homeless are, um, and they just like to walk through there. These cameras is, I'd love to get more because they just help us to monitor where we can't be all the time. Um, we also got an LPR, which is a license plate reader. It looks like the same camera device there. What it does is it takes a picture of vehicles and actually zeros in on the tag number, so we can download photos and check tags. And this is used primarily in drug investigations. And in 2015, the police department, we bought a, on a grant, an enclosed trailer that sat in the back parking lot for many, many years, mainly used as a storage unit. Um, spoke to Chief Orman months ago and some of his men, and we decided to make it a command post for the town. So there's what it looks like sitting in the bay of the substation currently. Uh, we're going to get some more graphics to put on the side to show that it's a combination of fire and police usage. Um, thankful to Chuck Norton, he's done primarily a lot of the labor, but him and Darren Green and Tim Chavis. They put a dry erase board in there currently. They built this desk in the corner and put all the proper radios that we need, some power stations and some floodlights on the side, lights on the back of, uh, like I said, this is kind of like an initial phase that we're getting ready for. I think the fire department used it this past week, uh, the missing man search there on Mac Brecht Road. And Chief Orman said it came in very handy there. Um, so our idea is to- So our idea is to keep building upon that. They're putting an awning on it, they're getting a radio tower antenna made for it, so it's going to be, we're going to try to use it more often, you know, instead of letting it sit in the back parking lot, so we're excited to begin using that. And I believe that's all I've got to report at this time. Do you have any questions?
Do you know what the rules are about ski cams on municipal streets?
I don't, I was talking to Mike about it before meeting, and I had to reach out and say, I don't know. I don't know of any municipalities in the western part of the state using it. I'll have to look into that, see the legalities of using it. Y'all may know more than I do about it. As far as the state citation versus that ordinance?
If you're using, one of the red light cameras when it comes to monitoring, or you know, the court case that said you use red light cameras, that's state law, you're enforcing state law to do it, so any fines and forfeitures that come from that have to be kept in the county and go to the schools, to go to the school system. So that's why they're earning red light cameras anymore, because the municipality can pay and keep them up there for the service, but then send all the money to the school system. It doesn't make any sense to do it.
I think you have that same problem for you, when you tag somebody as you was feeling that's state law, you can't, you know, fight them over that and keep the money. So, I mean, you could, you could use it for the deterrent effect of it, but, you know, anything that you, you've got, in terms of fines, you can pay.
Unless you use it, because you do an ordinance to?
If it's, no, you can't, if it's state law, you can't bootstrap your way into, in fact, I think that's what the red light camera thing basically did, was say, now it's a little ordinance, you can't run red light, it's already state law, so you couldn't say, you couldn't layer it on top and say, well, we're not collecting for state law, we're collecting for local ordinance.
That one flew as a civil fine, it's not a criminal, it's not a traffic.
It's a Georgia?
It's a fall of a street camera down there. I understand it, but I know it's a different state.
It's a, it's a North Carolina constitutional provision of that.
Yeah, it's not, okay.
Thinking about some of the common areas like Main Street, and then we hear from other people in different neighborhoods, we hear about Womack Street, and, you know, it's not like the department's big enough to be able to work at all times, so. And I'm not saying it wouldn't have any value, it might have value in the department, being alerted, you know, if you've got somebody swerving nearby and ready to know when, that you're not in a good position to be able to sit here and clock people. You know when somebody's come through and had evidence for it and pulled over, like you would have.
And most of our traffic enforcement is compliant driven or accident driven. As far as Womack Street goes, I don't know of any complaints in the past couple of years that's come to me about any speeding issues. I remember a couple of years ago, I think I spoke to you. Yeah, about the EPS driver and some things. And you're in a bad spot at that Hillcrest. So like I said, a lot of us complaint driven mainly, and we just, when we do get complaints, we send some ultras out to, I sent one out to Bear Go, we had a couple of complaints last week, and actually had, was convinced, and one of the people that complained most came to the meeting and thanked us in the meeting. You know, we can't camp out everywhere. I think a lot of traffic enforcement's their design, and just campaigns here and there to try to keep the rest of the roads.
It's ridiculous, we're trying to create this multiple community, we've got businesses with people on the sidewalk, and people just have total disregard for the speed limit and the crosswalks, and, you know, I'm 100% with you, if it were designed better, we wouldn't have all those problems in the meantime. I wish we could, if there was a way that, for people to understand when they come down Main Street, that's not a place that you can get away with the speed.
But they can, I mean, they obviously do, right? Get away with speeding up and down, yeah.
I'm saying I wish.
I know, but I'm, I'm saying, what could we, since we know that they speed all the time, I was thinking about one of those four cameras, why couldn't we take a picture of the license plate, but I guess you couldn't ticket them then?
I mean, you could, and you can ticket them, you just can't give the money, so if you're paying a lot to.
You can ticket them, but all the money's going to go to the school system and fines and forfeits, that's where it goes, but you got to pay to maintain it. Any questions more for Chief Orman? Good, good report, thank you very much, Chief. Only one question that I had, and I saw, I saw the chief out at the fair here the last week or so, and I think there's a good turnout at the county fair. I was going to ask you, was that any, have any impact on your resources as a police department? Everything went well, went very well?
Yep, had any parking issues or any collision law down at the traffic lot? Went pretty well. Just going to be at a positive note as far as the traffic enforcement, we had two vacancies left, and we just hired two part-time people that are in the academy, they finished in November, and that, at that time, we'll be fully staffed, which is the first time in almost two years.
Wow, that's great.
So, once we get, we're getting to that point, we can do more extra recruiting and enforcement.
Sounds good, thank you.
I have one more comment while you walk. I've noticed from your, I noticed that you had given a warning ticket about littering. I'd love to see that report have more, because we've got a lot of people throwing stuff out, Womack Street looks bad. Anyway, I noticed that you had a warning ticket.
Anyone else? If not, I'd like to recognize our town attorney and Mr. Justin Sessor, who we haven't heard from tonight much. Talk about the conditional, conditional zoning. Justin, John?
So you're zoning more in its property, and it's built on a very traditional style of zone that says, we're going to set these zones, and here are the byright uses in those zones. There, when you have more intensive uses and things that you want to have, have a more insight into what it is and scrutinize it better, there, the more traditional route to, to look at that is a special use permit. They're difficult to administer because, um, they're quasi-judicial in nature of paywork, they're, it's essentially a property right, somebody gets to come and test their ability to, to come do this use on their property, and if they can establish by evidence, you have to take it in a quasi-judicial fashion, meaning, you know, whoever's here in it sits as sort of the judge and jury of all the thing. And, and so can't go out and talk to anybody about it, has to come in and say, I have a completely open mind, I can be convinced one way or the other by the evidence that's put on front of me. You know, it's, it's a very cumbersome task to have to, to try a special use permit before you all, and it gets appealed out to Superior Court, so it's, it's, you know, it's a difficult thing to try. But that's what we have had to, to really scrutinize more intensive uses of property. When Chapter 160D came along, we took that as an opportunity to remove that task from the town council, because it is, is hard already, but to cram it into a night like tonight, where on top of all of the other stuff y'all are having to try to deal with and negotiate, now we're also going to ask you to take on this quasi-judicial task of trying to weigh somebody's property right, take formal evidence, and then when people are, want to cross-examine it, that's supposed to be all been done very formally and like you're in court. What we have missed the opportunity to do so far, and what I want to suggest you think about very strongly, to the point that I think we're both going to recommend, and I think our manager will too, that you refer this to the planning board and look at, maybe implement it as soon as you can, is conditional zoning. So it's not quasi-judicial, it leaves all of that to the side, it's completely legislated, and I would want it to come to here. I think what you do is, it still is not going to be for everything. You have there, or, I think you have in your packet some information about it, I've got some in front of me that I'll walk you through in a minute. I want to keep, keeping the information to, to read up about it and what exactly it is. You would still keep it at the more intensive uses, 100, you know, apartment, you know, units, or 30,000 square feet buildings, or, you know, things that are sizable to the point where you all want to have some, some more say into how it goes and how it gets developed, but it's not this all or nothing thing where they either come to establish a legal right and we have, we're, you know, walking a tightrope of, of procedure that we can get called on. Instead, it's entirely legislative, you all still get to just express your opinion about what you'd like it to be. They come before you and say, here's our plan. It's not this whole thing of, this opens us up to a million different byright uses, because this is everything that can possibly be done in a commercial zone, hit for instance. They come to you with, here's the building, this is what we want to build, this is the, these are the amenities we want to have in it, and you all get to look at that and say, okay, that's great, but what about if we had, would you put a trail here? Would you add more parking here? Would you do a more thorough traffic? It puts conditions on what they want to do that you all get to have much more say in. Now, it's completely voluntary, they don't have to accept the conditions you want to put on, but you don't have to approve the use. So if they want to get that plan put through, they have to agree to your conditions or you don't approve it. When you do approve it, it's a written agreement, it gets recorded in the D's office, it says forever and ever, here's what we are allowing to happen in this zone, not in 20 years this could turn into a gas station because it's commercial, that kind of thing. So that's kind of the heart of what it is, and Justin may have some more thoughts he wants to share with you, but I, I really hardly recommend you look at it, because it makes very easy.
Yeah, it's, it's a use that you're seeing over 50% of town counties in the state of France, much of this, it's been commonly your larger towns, counties, and cities, that just, it's trickling down, but you're starting to see more smaller towns take on it. And like I said, you're get, that's always been, you know, when we come up and we say, hey, look at this free zone, you can't look at, yeah, we know this place, people, they want to put in a florist shop there, and, and it perfectly sounds great at the moment, but then you've got to think about all the uses that are allowed. That florist shop closes two years from now, and now it's turned into a mechanic shop or something, and then neighbors don't like it or something, you know? So you have to think about all those uses. Now, this would be a way you can say, okay, that can only be this use, these conditions, and we want, we want you to have a bigger setback off the road, you know, the minimum's 10, but we'd rather you be 30, I mean, you can start putting different conditions on there, or we want you to put in a fence on this side, which is stuff that we can do now in special use, can't do in zoning. So it's kind of a, a little bit of both worlds, without going through the elaborate quasi-judicial. And council can still, you can look into it, you don't have to be, can't do, you know, you can't, where the quasi-judicial, that was really the second way, because council at times, it's hard for you to be a council member and not have a free fee notion on something that's a major development of, that's going to be some big development in town. It's, you know, you could think of a, you know, a hospital or a high school or something, so now you, you don't have to order that quasi-judicial, you can still get the best of it for us.
And it's really tried and true, as it's, it was just before Chapter 160D, what you had was 50, 60 years of our courts saying, you can do this, you do have authority to do it, and with something like that, it makes sense, it was bigger cities, it was a Charlotte, will take on, you know, years of litigation to say, see if you've got that authority, you all don't want to do that. But they did, and the courts said, yes, you can do this time and again. With passage of 160D, we've now got not just the state court, but the general assembly has completely blessed us as a way to, to review zones, so I, I really, again, I think we ought to.
We need to formally pass the planning board, just with consensus to direct the manager of, or Justin of?
It will still, to adopt it, will still take amendments, text amendments to your donor's review of the UDO, and that requires, that still requires the planning board.
Would you get them to work on it and come back with a consensus, like we need the consensus for that, or?
I, I would ask you to go ahead and vote a motion to do it. Let me point out real quickly, some of the stuff I've given you here, this is the state law that authorizes you to do it under 160D. If you flip over to the second page, I've given you some of the definitions that are already in your UDO, we already defined conditional zoning, we just don't implement it, and we also have, we have reference to site plans, because like I tell you, you're approving a specific site plan when you do a conditional zoning approval. We talk about site plans and how they may be approved as part of a conditional zoning decision, we just didn't create conditional zones, so we need to do that, but I think that's a pretty simple thing. Everything I've given you and underlined here is a start of what that would look like, and there are scans of examples we can pick and choose from and find what fits best, but Justin, you can start that process with our plan.
Is the, is the suggestion or recommendation to have the planning board look at this and then report back to the town board before we take any further action?
I mean, you're required to anyway, um, you know, and, and Councilman Justin's asking me, how, how fast can you make this happen? The, if you pass the planning board with it, I think they have an agenda, they have a meeting on October 16th, that they can look at it, unless you're going to call for a hearing at your November meeting, we'll call them out in December. But I think that's pretty fast, and I think that to, to implement something brand new to, to this board and to this council, I'd, I'd want to give you the time to get more familiar with it, and I think you ought to study it in parallel with them anyway, so I, I don't, I'm not suggesting you try to adopt it in November, but I think December is.
Do we need any action from the board to go ahead and ask the planning board to look at this along with the town board, and then we will discuss it again at our November meeting, and then possibly the board may be ready to take some action by your December meeting. So, is that what we're saying?
Yes, sir, that's my suggestion, I think Councilman will answer that question.
Just that, I mean, the idea that we get to learn along with, I mean, I think the zoning thing is the hardest thing, period, that we get to face, get faced with, and so I'd love it if we can, in parallel, as I think you were saying, learn along with the planning board about, about these uses. So that we understand when they say back in more specificity than we get sometimes what they, what they're recommending as well.
I'd like to suggest that sometime soon, we have a joint meeting with our planning board, because we never really get to talk to them one-on-one or together, we talk about these issues that come up, they talk about the issues they're faced with, we talk about the issues we're faced with, we don't ever get a chance to get together and talk about things that we both deal with, so hopefully sometime over the next month or two, I'd like to see what the schedule and time to meet with the planning board and talk about things like this conditional zoning and other issues that may come up. So we'll look at, we'll look at some dates and try to get out to the board members and see when you might be available along with the planning board, and we'll try to set something up sometime in the next 60 days.
Do you need a motion on that?
Uh, I think so. A motion, is there a second? Second, motion, second, any discussion? Are none of us in favor of the motion, please, second, five, or raising your hand? Any opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Thank you, sir. Items from the council. Social district, town manager and the town attorney.
In May, Bernadette Peters from the town of Silva came by and told us a little bit about how their process works, overlaid with what the process is for the state. I provided you all just some basic information in your packets, and I had sent it out to you previously, just explaining what a social district is, the fact that we would have to amend our own ordinance, because currently we don't allow alcohol on public sidewalks, streets, et cetera, and then we would have to actually adopt a social district ordinance as well. There could be exceptions in there for special events, you can say, for example, Pumpkin Fest, if you didn't want to have alcohol at Pumpkin Fest, you can say, for this day, this event takes precedence and the social district is not included, and it is what it is, or you can say, if you had the age flashback weekend that was downtown, if you adopted a social district, then if they purchased alcohol from one of the lazy hacker or purity or somebody who was here, then they can take that around in the social district as part of that event. There is a couple of things that I need some direction on. Number one being, our lease of the gazebo is with the town, with the county commissioners, and there is a clause in that current lease that says, no alcohol on the property. That is a focal point for the social district that is proposed. It is the gathering place, it is where most people will, you know, come and sit and watch things and listen to music, so depending upon what you decide tonight related to the direction moving forward, we would have to go back to the county commissioners and see if they would be amenable to modifying that current lease.
We're going to check the temperature on that, goodbye.
I sent a message to the county manager, and I haven't heard back.
I have a couple of questions about that, so the, those sidewalks around the square, I assume are public sidewalks. So the, those sidewalks around the square, I assume are public sidewalks. So they're not part of what we lease, they're just public sidewalks. That's a good question. I hope we made any distinction in the lease. And then another question is, well, so if the state law is applicable to public sidewalks, my question is, then do we have to, it would, by right, we allow on public sidewalks. I think you, you would have to amend your ordinance that says it's prohibited on sidewalks that we've shot several holes in, in the past five, six years, but we need another one that says also this is permitted in a, in a, a social district. My other question is, we're talking about events where, like the eightage flashback, where you have it in the middle of the street. So picking on the square, people were generally sitting in Iowa street, so that would be allowed, but so I...
At that point though, for a special event, you'd have to do it like a beer garden. You would have to actually do it like we've done in past or events. You would have to put the barrier around it.
So for picking on the square and eightage flashback, we'd still have to do the beer garden?
No, if you had it in a social district, you would be allowed to do what you need to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. So picking on the square, when that street's closed off and people are sitting in the street, if we had a social district, then people are going to be allowed, we don't have to ask the county for permission for that or the state, right?
Well, the state you have to, because they have to approve your social district.
No, but I mean, after that's approved.
Yeah, if it's approved, then you would be allowed in that social district from whatever the boundaries are, which the proposed district is from Town Hall down to the lazy hacker, including Stewart Street, Clock Tower Square, gazebo, leaving out Rankin Square.
What I'm getting at is, I'm not as concerned about the use of the actual square where the gazebo is. I mean, it'd be great if we were allowed that use or if they, if they maybe sell them the square, but I don't think that, again, it's the social district because you still have, where people gather on the street, you're still allowed to do that.
It's just a matter of enforcement.
And whose y'all would agree to enforce it?
Police.
Just to say that they can't go up to the state or anything.
To be on that property, we would have to enforce, we would have to look at what's in people's cups essentially.
That wouldn't bring sheriff's office in place since it's canon property, I mean, I know we leased it, but...
They don't.
If you're leasing it, it's not, it's, you know, a lease is supposed to be all current ownership. I mean, it's, it's not the long-term ownership after the lease.
How long is the lease? Is it a multi-year or an annual?
No, it's a long...
It's a multi-year.
Fifty years or something.
Oh, fifty years.
Another issue with enforcing parking at the courthouse, and it's because of canon property, or that's what we've been...
So is it a canon enforcement issue as far as the parking around the courthouse?
If it, if it's our responsibility to enforce the boundaries of the social district, I mean, I'm not sure how that's any different than making sure people don't walk outside the social district. I just, I don't, I don't see it as a...
Well, that's what it would be, it would still be the same thing, but, you know, same when we have the Christmas decorations up and people are doing photo ops and stuff, if it's not included in the social district, then you're going to have a lot of trouble if people are carrying around cups that...
Seems to me like a conversation needs to be had with the county, because they're going to be part of this either partners or adversaries, and we really don't know what to do until we know what their position's going to be.
Well...
But you need some action with that, right?
I, I just need to know whether to get on their agenda for you all to say, are you amenable to...
I think we need to go ahead and, I think we need to go ahead and say, this has been brought to the town council on several occasions about creating a social district in town that's going to involve the county. We'd like to get your input before the town board moves ahead with it. No matter what we do, we'll have to have public input and public hearings before you adopt any kind of ordinance, even if they're, everybody's in agreement to it. So I think first of all, we need to find out, or other major partner on downtown has any problems with this, or if they're waiting for the camp, the town, to take the first step, we need to know where they're coming from.
Well, they have asked us to come to them only after you have made your decision as a council as to whether or not you're going to move forward. They had asked that...
Do you all have enough information to move forward?
Yes.
And I will say, Councilmember Culpepper had sent in a text, he is for social districts, he supports it, and would like to include all the way down through Town Hall.
Not just the little walkway, I know that we don't have a grass and all that, but all the way down, okay?
Essentially just entire property, because that would include the parking lot as well, so it's...
Okay, yeah. So what do we need to do? Make a motion to...
To move forward with...
Social districts.
Social districts and get with the county, and then of course we will have to procedurally do call for a public hearing, do a public hearing. The state would still have to approve, so there's still multiple steps that have to occur.
So move, second. You can go ahead.
Ms. Lane has made a motion that the town council move forward with the proposal to consider creating a social district on Main Street in the areas mentioned by the town manager, and the motion was second of Mr. Goffey, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion, any discussion concerning the motion? Here are none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed by a like sign? Okay. Manager, you have your direction from the board to proceed to the next step. Okay. Nikwasi Initiative update. We had a couple of folks who attended that meeting recently, and do we have a report or an update on Nikwasi?
Oh, not him again.
I want to get him a seat up here, you know?
So if you want an update, Nikwasi initiative, you know, since the inception, it's been meeting monthly. So recently, the quorum, getting a quorum for a meeting, it's sometimes has been an issue. They are down a couple of seats right now, and we had one member that's been pretty sick, unable to attend. But some of the items have been working on, honestly, you know, they completed the key offs right after, it was two years ago, down at the mound. This past year, they completed the Apple Trail along the Greenway, you know, they dedicated to Barbara, and they had the dedication for gifts. They've been working on some signage at the Hall Mountain. This is part of their cultural corridor they've been working on. They've had those signs, and they've been, as of August, those signs have been delivered because haven't been installed yet. Last month, they reconvened mountain partners, which was a larger group before the transfer of the mound, and prior to COVID, and then they reconvened it for the first time in over about three years. And it was down at Kelly School, that was September the fifteenth. There was a variety of other organizations attending those meetings, but it wasn't as large as it was in the past, we used to only have twenty-three people there. I think there was about eight different organizations that came to that today. They've been working on some blue ways, they received funds from TBA, and that's all along the corridor. And then they have created a mound committee which looks at the establishment of everything associated with the mound and upkeeping the mound, because, you know, if there's anything, they've been dealing with things like, there's been groundhogs, the burrage into the mound, how to deal with it, taking those issues and going for THPO at Cherokee, so you get their approval and kind of be a go-between. As of recently, they've been kicking around ideas, putting some signage on the mound about telling people it's a sacred site and try to stay off the mound, and we've had some back and forth. I know David was here, he would say he's not happy with the wording of the sign, doesn't, I know David doesn't really think there needs to be a sign, I don't think there's an issue. I don't believe there's really that big of an issue either. I don't see a lot of people on the mound. I think some education, that it's a sacred site, it's good. But now there's a new navigating, I do leadership change in Cherokee, so you know, navigate that and see how that looks, how that happened yet. But, yeah, my big concern just really has been, you know, just getting people to come to the meetings, and lots of times we'll have to go to meetings, and we talk about stuff, but we can't take any action on anything because we're not getting a quorum. And not getting great input from our members from Cherokee, they're not, they don't, they don't attend at all. They know they have other jobs, they're not, it's not their, that's been one of my concerns.
When's the new chief sworn in?
Today, I have no idea.
This morning at nine thirty.
What do you think we should do? I mean, what, what are you, what's your recommendation, Justin? I mean, this is, this is sad that you can't even get a quorum, I mean, that, that, that's not good.
I don't know, I really don't know what the answer is. I mean, you can't, you've got to people that won't sit in, and then you, or the candidate in, or people that won't attend.
You need to put attendance requirements in there if they, if they, if they miss so many meetings, evidently they don't have an interest in it, and it should be replaced by someone who will attend the meetings. Do you have in your bylaws attendance requirements now?
I believe so, I don't know how...
They need to be enforced if they're in there, if they're, if they're in there and you have somebody whose name is there, they never show up, they're not really doing much good for anybody.
And so maybe they'll get one here, and then other ones don't come, and, you know, still just they bounce around, or some say they're coming and they don't, and combination of Zoom and in-person, and need to move around to different places.
I would suggest that you contact the members and tell them if they're not going to be at the meeting, they need to contact the co-chairs and give them a justifiable reason why they can't be there so they can get an excused absence. Otherwise, it's considered an unexcused absence.
I think there was a lot of excitement around it when it was actual, you know, transfer of the mound and activity around the mound. What exactly of the signage has been going on in terms of improving the area down in
To me, it's more about the most of it is trying to get Eastern Man to decide what's going to happen with Dan's Auto Building, if they're going to invest in it or not invest in it. And that's kind of been the, you know, the only real action or anything, we've been trying to, the executive director's been trying to get that.
Chief Hicks, if he's taking what he's been saying during his campaign, they're going to start spending inward instead of outward.
Yeah, I know that's the case.
After every election in Cherokee, there's a, there are a lot of changes in personnel. So we really don't know who the, who the players are going to be until they make those decisions and settle back down, then you'll know who you need to talk to. That's been the history of it over the years. I don't think I'm saying anything that's, that's untrue. You need to know who you're going to be dealing with. There'll be some people who'll be there from now on, but the ones you may need to talk to may be new.
Yeah, and David did message, and he had some more, he could probably add next more on the side as well, he has some other thoughts as well, but he can relate to everyone before he had to jump off.
Any more questions? Thank you, Justin. Okay. The next town council meeting is scheduled for Monday, November the sixth at six P.M. Pumpkin Fest is Saturday, October the twenty-first, starts at nine A.M. and goes to four. Be sure you buy your pumpkin and roll it down the hill. Who knows, you might win. And Election Day, don't forget that, big election coming up this year, municipal elections. A lot of people running, several of them sitting up here, and so if you don't forget it, please show up and vote on November the seventh. So we do have a closed session, so as we said earlier, closed session for attorney-client privilege under North Carolina General Statute 143318, eleven, parentheses, A and three. Do we expect any, any, we don't expect any decisions to come out?
No, sir, I expect to be there.
We expect that there will be no decisions made following the closed session. If there are, they'll be in public session, but we don't expect to make any decisions after closed session tonight. Is that correct?
Just to adjourn. Motion be...
Well, just probably just adjourned. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Mr. Lewis the second.
Say it.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We're now in closed session.
Good.
That's a prerogative, right?
They charge a hundred and forty dollars registration for electric vehicles. And the...